Then I think we're ready to move on to the public hearing for 75 Montvale Road. Does anyone here to talk about that? Could we, would it be possible, we got a couple of chairs up at the table for people to-
Sure.
Should we use the smaller-
Oh, so that you can get a better-
Yeah, yeah, please.
Alright, this is a public hearing under RGFA. As I understand it, you live in the house now, but you want to increase the size of the house, and that triggers the RGFA bylaw, so we're reviewing the increase in size of the house. Alright, and we've given this about half an hour for review. I'm Al Adel, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and-
I'm David Bendelson.
Steve Oppenheimer.
Roy Channell.
You don't have any consultants with you? No architects entering the conversation?
The architect has done the planning.
Yeah, so you're making the presentation on your own? Or, I mean, the way we usually do this is that we listen to the applicants, tell us what they want to do, usually that involves showing us what, plans, elevations-
There's a small set of plans.
Yeah, we submitted plans. Alright, so if you could walk us through it in say fifteen minutes or so, then we could ask questions.
Where are the, excuse me, where is the set of plans?
They're in that little set there.
Is this the only set?
There's two sets.
You guys will share a little share.
Yeah.
This is a house we moved into two years ago. It was a new building. Built by Kane, Kane built planners. And basically, the extension we're looking at doing is the current garage. And basically, the extension we're looking at doing is the current garage, it's quoted as a two-car garage, but it really is a one-and-a-half car garage, It's quoted as a two-car garage, but it really is a one-and-a-half car garage, because there's a staircase in the middle that has to be there for zone planning because there's a staircase in the middle that has to be there for zone planning that basically doesn't allow you to really park a second car or really tightly park a car. that basically doesn't allow you to really park a second car or really tightly park a car. So, we were looking at extending the garage out, I think it goes out to twelve-and-a-half feet So, we were looking at extending the garage out, I think it goes out to twelve-and-a-half feet from the existing garage, and at the same time, we're looking at putting upstairs, from the existing garage, and at the same time, we're looking at putting upstairs, abutting our master bedroom, a wardrobe, and a study next to it. abutting our master bedroom, a wardrobe, and a study next to it. So that if you look at the last, the last page actually gives you the second floor, So that if you look at the last, the last page actually gives you the second floor, which gives you a walk-in closet and a stay which is above the proposed garage. which gives you a walk-in closet and a stay which is above the proposed garage.
It's in one bay, one bay garage, to fit the second garage. It's in one bay, one bay garage, to fit the second garage.
I think what happened in this situation is somebody wanted to come in under the RGFA figure. I think what happened in this situation is somebody wanted to come in under the RGFA figure.
What was the figure before? What was the figure before?
Just show it, ten percent. Just show it, ten percent.
It's res- res- res.
Pardon?
I think it's a res- 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 is it res- 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 no, no, I just want to know what the RGFA-
The actual arm, I think.
What is it now, or what's it going to be?
It's a seven-hundred square foot addition that adds to existing three thousand twenty-two square feet. And it's on a twenty-one, seven ninety-eight square foot lot in a residency zone.
It's Resident C, that's the reason. So you're, the, it's a thirty thousand square foot lot.
Right, so it's just-
So they're over the three thousand square foot trigger.
Right.
So they're going from what to what?
So, they're going from three thousand twenty-two to like four thousand.
Wait, three thousand twenty-two is already-
It's already over.
Over ten percent.
It's already over.
No, it was not over, it was eight percent, I think.
The figures I had were that it was, it was three thousand twenty-two on a thirty-one thousand square foot lot. So they were under.
Oh, I see.
Three thousand twenty-two. Not three thousand two, but that's still-
No, because it's thirty-one thousand seven ninety-eight.
Okay, so just under.
So, and then now they're adding seven hundred. So it's-
Alright, so three thousand twenty-two plus seven hundred and something.
So they're like at three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two now.
But their lot size is thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eight.
Right, so they're-
So they're still under the ten percent.
Not when they were thirty-seven twenty-two.
Not at thirty-seven twenty-two.
Wait, the lots-
They're three zero two two.
That's still over by twenty-two square feet. If you're going by the thirty thousand square foot figure-
The lot's thirty-one nine nine eight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thirty-one seven ninety-eight.
So the figure we have here is the existing lot coverage by six point two percent.
Let me just, let me just ask. Are we going by the lot size, ten percent of the lot size, or ten percent of the zone size?
I think we're going, I always thought it was ten percent of the lot size.
Well, ten percent of the lot size, three thousand, if you're-
Would be thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one four nine.
And they're at thirty-seven.
Okay. Alright, so, so, okay, I get it, I understand.
So they're moving, they're just under, they're going to be slightly over.
Yeah.
Six hundred square feet.
Nope, I understand. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so, alright, so you want to add seven hundred in, how many-
About seven hundred square feet. I think it's a little less than that.
Right.
So the issue is, is that they need a second garage, and then they would have the space over.
What about, what is the, what is the plant material, the existing plant material on the north side of the site? What is the vegetation along here?
So there are, we have put a lot of vegetation there, so we have put a lot of shrubs which are on the ground, they cover the ground. There is a lot of trees, one fell. And almost all mosquitoes last year when it was a big hurricane. But there are a lot of trees remaining. And then there are, so shrubs, and shrubs that we put and trees that were there. Do you need to-
Well, no, I mean, what, none of the plants show any of the vegetation, yeah?
For which?
You're asking, you're asking this-
That's an old supply, so I'm just trying to-
That's not, but-
Well, this is a good bay, you're asking-
Are you asking-
Presumably, that's, this is the proposed dwelling from where they built it before. This is what's there now.
So what, what, will you-
Are you, are you-
No, no.
The question's whether we're gonna do it or not.
Push this out, so the grades gotta change, yeah.
But not much, because it don't, actually, it doesn't go, it goes, the proposal goes only halfway through this first, it doesn't go yet on the area that goes down.
You were at the site visit yesterday, so you saw, there is a-
There's a swell.
There's a swell.
But, but there's quite a lot of space before you-
I'm guessing twenty feet before the swell.
Yeah, there's quite a lot of space.
General slope leading to that, but it's relative.
Yeah, it wouldn't impede, impeach on the, on the swirl at all, but it'd still leave a good ten feet or so, I think, accurate.
No, this is not accurate, that you never done looking at it.
No, I know, I know, but this was what they were gonna, how they were gonna grade it, they apparently didn't grade it that way.
No, they absolutely did not.
Yeah, I think you were there yesterday, there's quite a lot, there's quite a lot of leeway before you actually hit the swirl.
There must have been a lot of fill on the site.
And I think you, I can't remember who remarked, one of, one of the people doing the site visit remarked, remarked exactly that, I don't see it, was it Sue?
Yeah, she's out here.
Yeah, I can't remember who it was, but someone remarked that there was a lot of fill done to flatten out that space right across.
Alright, so what we don't have is current, sort of current site conditions with respect to the current contours and grading that are accurate.
But we did do that, actually, we did it, because it was not completely done.
It was a new site plan.
Was there?
Yeah, we-
Oh, we don't have it in our packet, sorry.
No, we knew, we did it new.
You're talking about this one that doesn't have contours?
No, that's, that's the site, the mention plan.
Well, it shows the proposed addition.
Yeah, it does?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there, in light, but what I'm talking about is that if the contours are different from what we show, it would be, what we need for the record is what's actually been built in terms of the, of the current contours. I mean, what we have is an inaccurate contour plan, which is that one. Right? It's gotta be.
Because there's a three-foot difference between where the garage is now and where those garages going.
Right, this can't be right, if differences are fairly flat.
Up two points, and then it goes down, because we have put all the shrubs where it goes down to keep that earth.
So it sounds like what happened when they, when they, when David Kane built this, he actually changed some of the site conditions to raise the platform for the house, and doing that, he didn't have to do this regrading. But then it's gonna involve some contouring down here that we don't see, so it would be good to get an accurate picture of what is actually on the site now.
The front is very, is quite flat.
Yes.
So-
That shouldn't be hard to do.
The, the, the side is, like, there was no way that we would impeach on the, on the swirl, and there would still be a good ten feet, I'd say.
No, I think when we calculate, it's less than half, like-
Yeah, half a foot difference in-
No, half of the flat area before you go down. Because we only wanted one bay, so one bay isn't actually that big.
Thirteen point five feet.
Yeah.
Your structure would be, you know, just-
It looks like they, from looking at the property, it looks like they pushed out the contours a little bit.
Yeah, it looks like-
Because the swell's not really indicated on them.
No, it's true.
It's a swell, but it's not-
It's not as pronounced as what's there.
And it drops off significantly.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think they probably shut the contours at this point.
Right.
Probably wouldn't be.
But we could start it again.
We had, yeah, we had the-
You had it redone, you had the contours redone?
Well, not this, they, they redid the site plan, because that, that company, they had some illness issues, and they were unable to do it, so they, so we actually had to get someone else to do the land survey. But they used their plans, they, they made their plans available, like, I can't remember, there was, I think, because when I phoned them to just ask them to redraw it, they said, oh, we can't do it, because I think one of the principals of the company was, was ill or something, and then they, they just weren't able to do it. So they provided the plans to this surveyor, and we have had them redone.
I just want to see if this shows the vegetation on that side.
Good enough, it's very natural on that swell.
In any case, you, you don't expect to be doing any earth we look at.
It's just for, it's just for record.
Yeah.
Far enough away.
Oh, it's quite, yeah, it was quite, I think, basically, so-
Yeah, it's just for the record.
Yeah.
Has David had a chance to look this over at all?
He has, and he, he did, he's not coming until a little later, but what he said was he would like to see drainage calculations.
Okay. It's another reason for that control.
And we had a discussion about the drainage, and they would like to just use rain barrels.
Yeah, we've already looked into rain barrels.
We were actually looking, yeah. But we had, no, we had looked already before, because we were thinking of putting all over the house, because we saw it with friends of ours, so then we will for sure put in that area too. So, Chinese Australian, and in Australia, you use only rain barrels, because that's a way to save water, so our house is-
So we were, we were looking at putting rain barrels in anyway, so-
I'm not sure they would be sufficient for the amount of rainfall you get here.
A great deal.
The rain-
You can use-
I mean, it's a great idea.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, then they leak, but-
I mean, how should you use them for your garden?
Well, we-
That's what we do.
That's what we would do.
That's why, that's why we wanted a wood.
But if they, if you get a huge rainstorm and they're pouring out water at the same rate they're taking in water, they're not accomplishing what storm-
The retention area.
Storm retention needs to do, so-
That's the word, that's sort of the water budget, you know? More water, water out. More water, water out, where's it go?
One of the things that we look at is the runoff into adjacent properties in the road from the sites, and so what we want to do is be sure that you weren't, that the additional paving, it wasn't, wasn't exacerbating the runoff issue. So that's why we have a civil engineer that we consult with, so my recommendation would be, let's let them work it out with David, and see what comes out of that, that effort.
Taking into account the existing roof and paving, and any new paving and roof.
Yeah, and let's see what the-
Any pervious material.
Would you be, I think you have a basement?
Sorry?
You have a basement, yeah, because you're surrounded by swells, so you've got to have some pretty high water tables.
We do, but all of Montvale does. I mean, if you ever pass from a rail, I agree with that.
So it's real important how much impervious surfaces there are.
But that's another reason why we wanted to put-
If you look, the asphalt's actually already extended out here, so it actually-
It's just a little bit-
So this is actually like a parking bay, if you want, that's already asphalted, so it would actually just be this, this area.
Plus the roof.
Yes, plus the roof, yeah.
But in, in your case, it's not just a differential, because this project never went through site planning review, so what's already there, the existing roof, and the existing patio and asphalt, and all the pervious surfaces may already be causing water to be shed onto the street and onto the neighbors. We don't know that it isn't, so that's what has to be determined.
Is that a standard thing for all the houses?
For any house that has to go through site planning review that's greater than ten percent of the property, yes.
So what, so nothing gets reviewed if it's under the-
Correct.
So I could build anything I want to?
Well, actually, sometimes the storm-
You're stormwater, you, no, I don't think we did in this house.
I don't think so. I, I don't think it's an all-or而非 process, but it's, it's one that we would need to have our engineer sign off on. And you, you know, you have a strategy, so it may be a perfectly adequate strategy, we just need to get our experts' opinion as to whether it's adequate or not, because none of us are engineers, so.
I think, like, I gave, I can't remember, I gave the plans, like, I gave fifteen copies, I don't know if that goes to an engineer, to the site engineer also, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the process looks like, this-
But I gave, there was a large list, I think, providing me against him.
I think Dave got a packet.
Yeah.
And he actually, he sent me today to ask about the packet and about the review. And he had been asked to do the review. So, but I think a couple of things got lost in the translation, so, and I think he was kind of waiting to see what the board would do, and his recommendation was to, similar to what we did with, with Gifford School, is to just condition it on having a review of the drainage.
So who does the review of the drainage?
Our engineer. So he's gonna need some information from whoever it was that did the engineering on this. Next item, are you proposing any additional landscaping at all? Do you know of any, Kim?
So, the town engineer did get the site, did get all the whole, all the documentation. I've got, sort of, it's signed off here, so-
Town engineer, uh-
Wait, the town engineer?
That's Steve Fogg.
I've got, so I've got, so Board of Health, Board of Selectment, Building Inspector, Conservation, DPW Director, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Town Engineer, Treasurer and Water Department.
Town engineer's different, this is, we're talking about an consultant to the planning board, not the town engineer.
That's, that's a bit strange.
It actually isn't, because the town engineer is usually concerned with town property.
Oh, okay.
So it's different interests, even though it sounds redundant, it's different interests that are represented.
Kim, no landscape. You, but you've seen the site, but you think it-
We talked about doing some islands at the front.
So we have an island on the front that we have planted several times, and nothing survives on this island, because it's, if you see also the pictures, but if you were also present, this, the south side has so many trees that no matter what we tried, did not, you know, would grow and then die off. I mean, we'll try another, we have actually bought other plants, they will try them. Then we have also put things on the front that will constantly destroy it by either the plow, or when they fixed Montvale, they were never put back.
Well, we look at this from the standpoint of the character of the street, and the neighbors on your side and on the upside of the street all have islands, so there's gotta be something-
We put back on this island, and we, this time we bought ostias, which are supposed to be plants that survive well in the shade, ostias.
Ostias, hostas.
Hostas.
That's why, which we had also in our previous project.
Yeah, we'll be looking for things like shrubs and potentially a tree that provides some scale, because it's pretty wide open in the front yard right now.
Okay. Okay.
Survive, we can do it, so we have that.
Anything on the side-
The side buffer, there's a lot of, you know, there's one big, one large-ish evergreen tree which is providing a good screen between the two neighbors, and then there's a lot of brush and smaller sapling, you know, just the Jewish trees in there as well. I'm not as concerned about the side, planting it to the front, it's, it's wide open to the street.
Anybody live behind them, is that all right?
Yes.
Buffer, there's a-
The buffer in the back there-
There's a lot of trees.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's really dense. You may want to talk about the lighting.
Yeah, that's next. It's, checking the boxes. Okay, so you're gonna be looking for some sort of idea of landscaping in the front.
Right.
Okay. Lighting. David, you might want to talk about our lighting philosophy.
For a number of years, everything that comes before the board, we look for dark sky, quiet lighting.
Yes.
Yeah, we- It's a standard kind of thing, where you're basically putting the light down on the ground where you want it, not up in the sky, and trying to have filaments that burn shaded or covered, so that when people are driving down the road, they're not looking at the bright part, but they can see the light, you know, on the ground where you want it, but not necessarily the bulb itself.
We actually don't have a lamp, because we don't have a lamp personally, so-
We did talk about, so the majority of our lights are under, like easements, so-
It's much better.
All of them.
I think probably about one, so we're covered in some way. We did speak about, that you mentioned there may be some glare issues still, so-
I'd say one, two, three, four, five, also, that's right.
Yeah, so all of these are actually under, under easements.
But they still shine out.
Right.
So what we, what I actually looked for, specifically for night sky, I found a paint, a paint which is made for night sky, which, yeah, I brought it actually, because I thought maybe you were interested in seeing it.
Sure.
So we could actually, because the way our lamps are, there is glass on the top, and then there is, and then there is the metal, but this glass on the top, it's outdoors, it's made for outdoors.
So these are night sky, sort of glazes, if you want, the cover, the cover glazing.
So you pin it inside.
So you paint this, and so this is specifically for outdoors, and outdoor, and it says like the night sky, because they have others that do not certify for night sky.
So I, like, we've got a European background, so we, we actually asked some people in Europe, and they, they told us that it's quite standard, that people use these types of, I think you'd call them glaze, like, it's a glazing paint.
It's an acrylic paint made specifically for-
Or, you can see this one.
For glass, yes.
There's a couple of other people who have used something similar, so.
It's interesting that Europeans are using a paint called Americana.
It's probably made in China, though, so.
And I bought this one too.
Yeah, so there's quite a few.
It's certified, but that one is more like night sky, so it creates a completely sealed glass.
Are you sure night sky isn't just the color?
No, 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 because you can look there. It is a great, it's specifically for glass. Oh, not specifically for glass, but I was only looking for things that would, you know, go for outdoors, and paint glass that would stay.
This one is, is this opaque?
This is the back, yes.
Is that opaque as well?
I think this is transparent, but it's still black.
It's still, it's a transparent.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so this is translucent, is that, is that the result?
No, it's still black, but it is still black, but I was looking more at this, because when I looked, because I looked at reviews also, people, the things that are durable outdoors.
You must see the whole thing.
There are lots. Do you want to see this?
That one, yeah. Do you have one lights at all, anywhere?
There is one at the back that's triggered, it's a motion trigger.
But we rarely have it, we only have it on if we, if we barbecue, otherwise, nothing is-
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, should you explain the policy on headlights?
We spoke about it, so.
I mean, it's a rule, it's a rule.
This is a two-year, so we were surprised when we initially met with Betsy, that this is a two-year-old house, and that, you know, if it was a thirty-year-old house, then I'd, you know, I'd say, you're okay, but, so we're just surprised.
Well, one of the things that happens with some regularity is that people build just under.
Which is what happened here.
Yeah, and then people want to expand, and then they get the, the people that-
I mean, we decided to expand, because we really suffered two years where we have to park one car outside and make some arrangements where there is a snowstorm to park our car somewhere else, and we cannot get passengers in the garage, so we have three little kids. It, it has been extremely frustrating, plus we don't, I mean, because our house is fairly small, it doesn't have closets upstairs, I mean, it has closets, but they're tiny, so we thought, okay, if, we actually started off by doing only the garage, and our agent said, why don't you build up, at least it would show you this closet problem.
Well, what's, it's a little bit of a mystery to me, why the people who build just under, don't just go ahead, everybody in town knows what the standards, the planning board standards are, why don't they just go ahead and put the fixtures in the planning board would say okay to, as opposed to having to go through the night sky process over and over again? It would be so much simpler, and the fixtures don't look any different, and they're not more expensive, it's just, it's a mystery to me why people like you guys walk into the, into the situation two years later, and, you know, everything is a surprise.
For us, though, I mean, it's important to know, we want to go ahead with this, otherwise, we should just look for another house, because it's not covering our needs, but because it's a very convenient location, just with a school bus, we like, and we have-
And in terms of lighting, I don't know how it changes in terms of lum, it's a fully energy efficient house, so, you know, the globes all-
The lum are very low.
Are all low.
Yes, but that is something we do in our houses anyway, I mean, our house in Connecticut was not new, it was not energy efficient, but we changed all the lamps.
Yeah.
And, you know, we spoke about-
I don't think they're in the setback.
Well, no, but they're, well, they're non-conforming structure.
Why?
It meets the setback.
It meets the setback, it's a separate zone.
Yes.
I mean, I think that adding to the house is, I don't have a problem with, does anybody have any problem with the con, with the concept of adding another bay to the garage, a closet or something? No, I mean, it's not that, it's just that, you know, we have to, now it's on the record, and so we're going through the process that we would go through if we were reviewing it as a new house, it's just that before it was built, you get to be the guys that-
Get to be it.
So, what's the next steps? We need to get, get from drainage, we need to get- We need to get infrared drainage, we need to get an accurate site plan with the current grading, we need to get some landscaping.
Landscape plan.
Landscape plan. We, I guess we need to decide whether we're going to sign off on the, on the paint, the dark sky paint, and we're going to have to say that the floodlight has to come off.
What are the total lumens, I couldn't read that.
What are they, be clear.
The total lumens are, let's see, sixteen and basically.
I guess thirteen, three, four, two is my reading. Thirteen hundred lumens? Thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty, right, but then you're adding a couple and bringing it up to about fifteen, five, fifteen, six.
Fifteen, five, six.
Yeah, that's fine.
And they're all under.
When you're talking about floodlights, you're talking about these lights, which are.
That's, that's, that's what you call a floodlight?
Yeah, yeah, because that's.
I'm not, no, no, no.
There's one on the back.
There's one on the back.
It's this one.
That's the one in the motion.
That's the motion.
So that's the only one that's, like, what we're talking about.
So that's the only floodlight in the.
No, no, I didn't think they were.
This is the only one that's the issue.
But although this one actually doesn't glare up, because this one has cover of our, these lamps. This is not like this one's.
It points.
It goes down.
It points down.
It points to the stairwell.
Yeah.
Points to the stairs.
So it points just down.
I just used it, sorry, it actually points down and it's very.
And there is an easement over, over here.
Overhang?
Yeah, there's an overhang, yeah, sorry.
Like this, this.
Maybe change that light, so that it's, you know, it's just the scones that focuses down on the stairs.
But, you know, some distance between the stairs and the wall, is that true?
What is here is, well, this is the deck, and down here is like a smaller, where we have the barbecue.
Did you see the light? Was it, do you think it's a problem?
It's gonna, it's a floodlight, yeah, there's a lot of light. The back of the house is obviously very dark, but there's still neighbors they can see.
Actually, that is something you need to see at night, because actually it's very little light. I actually go down with a, I have it on to cook tonight, for example, I still have to take a.
Barbecue.
No, I have to take a flashlight, I cannot see the.
If you go to barbecue, in other words, you literally have to have an additional light in order to go downstairs.
Yeah, but, no, to go downstairs, I'm unable to go with this, but I can't really see the food that is cooking, so I, if you, I mean, this is not much, very much light.
The purpose of these lights is that they don't shed out either glare or just light.
Yes.
The idea is to limit the light to a task at hand, and so I think there are ways to make sure that that light is giving you what you need.
That's why I'm saying, this one is maybe something you have to see at night, because this doesn't qualify as a light that brights up the neighborhood, or would bright the back neighbors or the side neighbors. We can be, you know, we can even not see on our own backyard with this light, so. And it's one you should look at night.
Different light that just shines down.
Well, we can change it, if the recommendation is just to put it down as a downward facing light, we can, we can change it.
Yeah, that's a couple of.
Maybe longer, meet your needs for cooking.
But, you know, all of these things are actually additional costs that will add up to our cost of building a house, so.
A couple of hundred dollars.
And it's also, it's also the work, because not just the light, the light is not expensive, but the people that will come to do the job.
They'll be there already, they'll be there already.
For the other, the garage, you mean.
There was also one post light, but the light was on the corner of the property, is that right? Yeah. No, I thought I remember seeing a post light. It might have been neighbors.
Oh, the neighbors have? All of the neighbors have, actually.
It's a corner, like, the absolute corner of the property.
Uh, no, that's, that's about ten feet to the, to the neighbors. We don't, and then there's one across the road, we don't have any.
Actually, everybody has a post light, that's why, once we were coming here, it's such a pity to make us say, oh, this one, everybody has post lights in that street. Right now, if you're right, so.
All right, so that's our checklist.
So what do we need to do, like concrete?
I just need one clarification on the dark sky lamps, right? The unit itself, if I understand what you're doing, you're painting the top two-thirds, so that the bottom, in other words, allows the light to go through.
They're paneling the top third at the time.
They're paneling the.
Okay, so in other words, the light's going to shoot up, because it's inside the enclosure, or am I not seeing? That's what I'm asking is, what's going to happen to the light?
So if you, if you paint, so there are all the fixtures at, like, this one, so if you paint.
The bulb is right here, right?
Well, we can paint further down, but, you know, what we recommend is.
Right, where is the bulb?
It's inside, actually.
It's inside.
Is it in this top, it's behind the top part?
It's on the bottom part.
Now that you say it, I don't want to hear a question.
It's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's right around there.
It could be central, so we can paint down towards the center or half of the.
So the light sheds down?
Yeah. You know, one, one discussion we did have was, there is a safety concern that we have, you know, because it is, because it is dark around that area, so, and, you know, even at the moment, you know, there's not enough light to feel safe, you know, when my wife comes home or when your kids come home.
When I come home, I'm so afraid, I mean, I immediately open the garage, so I get the light from the garage, so I get out of my car safely. So the background on that is, we moved here from Connecticut, from New Haven, we were living about two streets from the housing vision that happened about five years ago.
In Cheshire, so.
In Cheshire, so we're very scared. And actually, our kids play with our neighborhoods, but we don't let them out when they're dark, because there is not enough lights in the street for them to be seen by a car when they're on their bikes or things like this, so. I mean, the, the lights.
It was one street light that was also on the end of your apartment that wasn't working, you were saying.
Well, I checked it tonight, it's actually, it's working, but it's just completely covered by trees.
Oh, like the orange one, yes.
Yeah, it's just completely.
Maybe a phone call to the DPW.
Well, maybe, yeah.
It can be stronger, no?
No, but the trees are watching the light.
Oh, the trees are perfect.
Honestly, though, if you don't have sufficient light now, and you're going to paint the top half or whatever those fixtures, you're going to end up with less light. You may want to think about getting new fixtures that are already dark sky compliant, and that can provide you with more light where you need it.
But if we, the dark sky compliance is basically to cover the top, right? So it doesn't glare towards the sky.
It's up and out.
What they often will do, see how, you have your lights where the bulbs hang down, what they would have is the lights above and have a reflector up there, which would, you know, reflect the light down, but also keep it from shining up and out.
So the light's more focused, so you might be able to get more light, even though they're, than you have now, even though they're dark sky compliant, so I just don't know if you're going to be happy painting on these fixtures.
So what about if we paint now the fixtures? And when they come, I mean, when we have the electrician there for the extension, we get them to change a couple of them to dark night, we see how, how much light they give us. And then keep that, because we want to see also, it's not, it's not just to satisfy you, because I'm sure you have families too, you care about safety, so.
Yeah.
You can try experimenting, isn't it?
Yeah.
So a question I had, so for the, you want to check that, the swill, basically?
Yeah, well, we need to.
Is that your engineer that does that, like?
Yes, our, just an idea, the accurate depiction of what is actually there today.
That would actually be your engineer doing that.
I'd say it is our.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, our engineer wouldn't actually.
So we need to contact someone and come and do the plan.
Yeah, he's already done it, it's not that difficult, it's just a matter of locating the contours accurately.
Doesn't he also need to confirm that the stormwater is taken care of?
Yeah, he needs to do the stormwater accounting.
Same person, same person.
Same person, okay.
And then our engineer reviews their work.
Okay.
He's pretty reasonable, so.
So we need a landscaping plan, okay?
It would be the same, but.
No, landscaping for plants.
For plants, right.
Final landscape.
Okay, run of the board there.
Fonture, fonture plan.
Runoff calculations.
Runoff calculations. Let's all change.
And change the floodlight in the back to a different fixture that's not a floodlight. And then, for now, we'll say okay to the painting, but you're, you know, with the understanding that you might change that, depending on what works better. That's, I think that's it.
If they do change those fixtures to dark sky compliant, they don't need to come see us about that, do they?
Well, I think they have to.
I mean, you'll be back to see us anyway, so.
Yeah, it sounds like, yeah, it's just, it's just going through Betsy.
But the lumens cannot exceed a certain number, so.
Twenty.
Twenty-two thousand, so.
I mean, the lumens are much lower. And we don't have plans to put that.
Yeah.
So the lumens, how many, twenty-two thousand?
Is the maximum.
So we're on fifty, with the proposed initial order, and we're still under.
But it's, isn't it twenty-two with pool? And I thought there was a difference between with the pool or without.
No, it's twenty-two.
So we're under, well, under that now. The type of lighting you have, right? So that trumps the lumens, basically, so. Should we put a ball in with that help?
For the landscaping, can I something, for the landscaping, is it a plan that we will do, or we will need?
You'll do it.
Yes, but do you need like a professional plan?
Or, you can, I mean, I don't have a problem if they want to put something together.
We've seen that before, but they hold them or actually did the landscape plan, as long as you.
But it has to be something of substance in the front of the house.
And if you want to do a sketch and send it to me, I can give you comments.
If you're talking with, you know, someone at the plant store and stuff, you really try to avoid invasive species.
Yeah.
And obviously native stuff is going to do better in the climate.
Yes, 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 we give that a chance, I guess. There's actually a list, a plant list on the website with recommended species.
You'll just want to recommend that, I mean, you'll want to indicate the type and the size.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so, let's see, are we far, I think what we need to do is continue it, because we still need input from Dave, for example.
Dave's our engineer.
Was, was that, who was at those, Sid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't have his input yet, so. That's a piece that we would need to get.
Because he seemed fairly, on my interpretation from the site worker, he seemed fairly okay with.
Yeah, I think he's probably going to be okay with it.
That he, that he saw, I think, I think out of all of you, he was sort of the one who seemed to be the most okay with everything, so.
Yeah. No, it's, it's probably, none of these things are big issues, you know. But all I'm wondering is, I think we do need to continue with, though, just to get his input.
So we could continue it to October twenty-ninth or November fifth.
You'd be ready, you think you'd be ready to come back to us October twenty-ninth?
I'm overseas, I'm overseas, like, I think I was saying this was sort of the last.
What's the other day, November?
November fifth.
It's just a Wednesday.
It's just a week later.
Yeah, it's a week later.
We might have a Celtics ticket, but.
No, 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 this is, no, it's the first, it's the seventh, yes, and it's true, it's a Friday, this is a Wednesday. Twenty-ninth, I have to go down to the.
Yeah, all right, so what is it?
So the fifth at nine o'clock?
Nine, at night.
Yeah, so we'd have to have a land survey ready by then.
Actually, a week before, just to head up, I'm not going to be here on November fifth, but I can.
But if you can just review whatever, what they give you, if you give all the information to Betsy, you can advance.
We need your information by the twenty-ninth, so that it can go to Kim and Dave.
All right, before we move on, anybody else have any comments on the application? No, okay, good, then we will see you on November the, or, at least one afternoon.
Do we need to take this, or this stays with you? This is your copy?
Yeah, this is our copy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, good night.